I think I'll take it into the Geek Squad.
Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge.
Pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with the approval of your agenda. Any additions? Dan?
I have nothing.
Dwayne, anything? Ryan?
No.
Nope. Okay, we're gonna have, uh, remove L1, the closed session. And we'll come back at the next meeting. And we're gonna update, you have an updated A to C, which is the consent agenda, the certification of the delinquent claims of the county. There's an updated sheet in front of you that has a couple of changes on it from the packet. That's all? I've got anything, Tim?
Nope.
Everyone should have received a electronic copy of that presentation for tonight and then it's also on Dropbox, so.
Perfect. Okay, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make that motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Consent agenda has changed. Any questions on that for administration? Entertainer motion to approve.
Don't move.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Visitors of the council, ICS library updates.
District clerk, I'm on the agenda. It just said library updates.
That's all of it.
Three topics, is that okay?
Yep, yeah, we're gonna handle all those things.
Uh, why don't you start with the library?
Sure.
Uh, so, library, uh, um, uh, we've completed our due diligence of the contractor. Uh, as of this morning, we confirmed the payment and performance bond are legitimate documents. Uh, the insurance was, uh, verified as of early last week or the week before. Uh, and we had a pre-construction meeting with the contractor to review, um, the rules and the specs that would be followed for the project. Uh, they will be working on a mock-up, uh, for the metal panel to check constructions for our review and the architect's review, uh, prior to any work starting out there. Um, so that's where we're at with the contract. I guess, just quick, within the library, any questions? Or I can move on to the-
Were you able to verify that the, um, Mr. Roy, the gentleman that had the criminal convictions, was, is not, uh, gonna be any part of the-
He is an employee of the company.
He is an employee of the company.
Will he be working on this project?
Yes.
In what capacity?
Um, he's the project manager.
Anyway, we can request that they get a different project manager?
We can definitely make the request.
I mean, I think it's to be in his best interest as well. Okay?
We can make the request. They may not be able to sub someone out, but we can make the request.
I, 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 I would strongly recommend that that be done, or that this be revisited again. Again, I, I just, our concern is that this company has been set up so that Mr. Roy, the gentleman with the criminal record, can, is the one who can do this work. Um, he's, he's signing building permit applications on, on behalf of equity builders. Um, so, i- it's very concerning.
Understood. Uh, however, there's no law that allows him not to do that. Uh, the only condition of his release from the time he spent is that he cannot own a business. That is part of his pro measures, so, um, he can be employed. Um, again, you hired ICS, your contractors are with us, not equity builders. We are carrying the risk. So, it's us, up to us to manage him and manage his company. Um, the son has owned the company, and the company's been in existence since 2015, actually. Uh, there was a trade of ownership, uh, in between there. There was another woman that owned the company with him. Um, and that's the only, the, the year, or the three months, whatever, August or whatever, that was just a transfer of ownership completely to the son.
No, they set up an whole, and they incorporated in October of 2021, this company that, that ICS has accepted the bids from.
Yep, we looked at that. It's actually the same holding company had the company since 2015.
I, I have it. I have it right here.
We've got the same documents.
It says, "Original filing, Business Corporation, October 21, 2021."
We can definitely check, but we contacted the state and they sent us a record that went back to 2015.
For what entity?
Including this entity going back.
Well, I, and I, that actually brings up another really good point, because he does have other companies as well that are very similarly named, which is one of the ways that this gentleman got in trouble was-
Okay, but not the father. This is the son.
Correct.
And we cannot hold the father, we can't hold the son responsible for what the father did.
As I said, I, I understand that, but my concern is that this company has been set up as a shell to allow Mr. Roy to do the work.
And we understand that, and we've talked to five references who all vouch for him and for his father's work.
So they, I mean, you're acknowledging that, that the father is gonna be doing the work on this property?
He did the work on those projects, yes.
But that wasn't pointed out the other night?
Yeah, yeah, we did. I think I mentioned that.
He's on, I'm sorry, I didn't want to step up.
Sure.
Yeah, I had mentioned that, Mel. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, but-
Yeah, 'cause he's been onsite already.
Is that your takeaway?
He is bothering us.
No, I didn't, I didn't understand the father had been part of one way of that conversation.
I think I, I think it came through.
Yeah, because we talked about- Pat, Pat had mentioned that she had been pleased so far.
But I didn't realize he was going to be the project manager. I don't think that was explicitly stated.
We can certainly make the request, and obviously, this isn't a position that he's in, to figure out how that-
No, it's not. It's not.
I think we're at the point where, as a company, we've done all of the vetting we possibly can. We've had several meetings with all of you to figure out what's the best course of action here. Um, we recognize that we are the ones that have to take this risk on, and we're gonna have to watch him as closely as possible and make sure that this thing can get done. He is going to be onsite. He won't be the only person, 'cause they have subcontractors as well that'll be working for him. Um, but frankly, we're, where the project is, is moving now, I think you guys may have some other recourse if, if used to do so as a city, uh, regarding this specific project. But, um, we're so far, I'd say, as comfortable as we can be, based on the references, on the communication, on the work that's happened to date.
How often will someone be checking up on the work, someone from ICS?
Multiple times a week.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
But you are located in the Twin Cities area, right?
We have people all over the place. We've got a guy that lives in Waterville. We've got projects all over the place.
Our main project director, ma'am, is, um, lives in, uh, or Fairville, I would say.
So how, but not daily? You won't have somebody here daily?
Not every day, but multiple times a week.
Right. But as much as we need. It's not like any other project. I have projects that are three hours away that I've been there every day a week when it's needed.
We also do have, um, the, the size of the project, not to diminish the size of the project by any stretch. Um, if this were a brand-new building, such as like the fire hall project that we're talking about, we would have much more significant concerns about being able to replace the contractor onsite if we did run into issues. Um, with this project, we're confident that if we were to run into any issues where we would have to put, stop work with the current contractor, we'd be able to get the job done still within the timeframe that's gonna lie. So, that does give us a little bit more, um, I guess, appeasement on our, with, with our risk and our ability to get the job done on time. Um, so it's not, it's not anything that we wanna have to address, but that does put us in a position of still being able to get the project.
But you will be checking on it multiple times a week?
That's our-
And checking the quality of the work?
Yep. That's the whole purpose of the mock-up.
Okay.
So they can demonstrate they understand what they need to do.
And frankly, that's the whole purpose of having a construction manager to provide that oversight, which you had, did not have in the past on that specific building, so.
I would remind the council that you do according to the terms of the contract that the city has with ICS. The city gets to pick the subcontractors. So if you, you have the right to reject subcontractors.
Aren't they the general contractor?
Why would, any contract-
You talked about yesterday.
They have with someone-
Whether you reference the subcontractor.
So he's technically a subcontract of ours, is what that references.
Okay, that's what that references.
And we have-
And yes, you may do that, but that does come with risks.
I, I think every option comes with risks here.
So what risks, I mean, okay.
I mean, I guess the biggest risk is that it doesn't go well. And, I mean, you're assuming that risk, saying that you're gonna replace the work, you're gonna make sure that it's done properly.
Correct.
So I mean, I-
From our standpoint, it is gonna go well. There is no choice that it's not going well.
Right.
Because that's not how we do our projects. You can call any one of our references, and Mel basically tell you that. Whether we have subcontractors that have good references, fall on their face, have bad references, we complete all of our projects per documents, per spec, to the satisfactory of our clients.
So, just so I'm clear, he takes the money and run, you're on the hook?
So we have, yes, technically, but we have some safeguards in place already. If, you know, once payments are gonna come, we are checking the subcontractors, that they're getting paid per state law. We, once we get paid, we have to pay our subcontractors 10 days. He has to pay his within 10 days, so the first one will be on it like a hawk. The first one will likely be the largest for his subs, 'cause it'll be material-based, but we will verify if, if we have to go the route of issuing double checks, we'll do that.
And if somehow he screws the building up more, you're on the hook?
Correct. Yep. We are your contractor, for lack of a better way to put it. He's a subcontractor.
Anything? Or, Dwayne?
No, I, I'm assuming that as much as you've been in business, that you've done your due diligence to protect your own backside with this and that, uh-
As much as the law allows, yes.
Understanding that you're assuming the risk, I'm okay.
Ryan?
This was pretty well explained yesterday. I just, uh, having him onsite as a manager, it's a little shock and concerns me, but again, our hands are a little tied as to what options we have. I understand that you have explained quite a bit of what's going on, and Mel has as well.
We're not, we're in a rock and hard place.
It's a tough situation, but what we're asking is, that we believe that the best course of action forward, from our vantage point, granted, we're not on the council, is proceed, let us do our job and get the job done, and get it done right.
I've articulated all of my concerns.
I'll just go back to what I said way back when, is we had issues with this building from the beginning, and we just wanna make sure we don't have that again. You guys have heard me say that-
Yep.
-several times now.
Yep.
I, I would, my preference would be if you asked that this gentleman doesn't, isn't the project manager here on this location. That'll make him happy, I'm sure, but, um...
Certainly something we can do, Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, I would have-
And if hopefully we can, you know-
If he asks why, tell him why.
Yep.
'Cause the council's, isn't comfortable having you manage a project with your history.
They're, they're fully aware of your viewpoint.
Yes, we've had a kickoff meeting with them. Um, there's a mock-up tomorrow with regards to design and what's happening in the library, and there's been many, I shouldn't say many, but multiple lines of communication with our project management team and them.
They're aware of our concerns and why?
Correct, very much so.
Yep. Okay. Thanks, everybody, for the input. And Mel, thank you. Only left for your input as well. Um, so I think we'll just, if, it sounds like everybody's going forward and let you guys do your job. We'll count on you to do that, and count on it not coming back to us.
And we'll provide, you know, regular updates, of course, both through, um, city administrator, but also, you know, we're happy to, we're, we're, we usually plan on attending council meetings regularly to provide updates with everything, so we'll at least at a minimum plan to do that, also with the library board, you know, there. So there's, all there are multiple levels of communication that we can provide to the city from us to give you updates regularly, so you know what's going on.
That would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, absolutely. It's kind of our, it's our standard operating procedure, so we'll-
So one of those-
We need to establish which one of those boards and committees and councils that you, how many you would like us to, 'cause sometimes people get sick of us doing-
Sure. Well, I mean-
Never.
On, on this, it would be helpful if it was both library board and council, simply because of the legal differences of library board and council under Minnesota law.
Absolutely. Yep, that's fine.
And one of those that you'll start seeing, because we haven't started construction, is a weekly update, so you'll start seeing it. Now, some of those might not say much because there's no work happening, 'cause there will be a few lulls here and there, but that's one of the, it'll demonstrate pictures that we're inspecting things on those types of things.
So do we have a start date for when they're actually, and I know they were doing some staging already, I think, a little bit, Pat, weren't they? You know, uh, where are we at with that?
We don't have a date as to when metal panel will be available. That's really the kickoff date. They can do some pre-work before that, but I think it's really highly dependent on when the metal panel's gonna show up, 'cause we can't really do a whole lot, like the spray barrier doesn't wanna be exposed to the weather for over 30 days, those kinds of things, so. Once we have that date, we can convey that as well on one of the updates, is what the schedule is right now.
Okay.
Library?
What you got next?
Uh, just two more things. One's an update on fire hall process, and then we have another, uh, idea, for lack of a better term, um, regarding your potential liquor store project and a different procurement method. So, I'll let him talk about that, and then we'll get to our liquor store.
So, Fire Station, we conducted architect interviews on Monday, just to get recommendation from the EMS committee of who we should use. Um, TSP was the successful firm. They're local, out of Rochester. They have multiple offices, but they are, I guess, considered a local firm, uh, with quite a bit of fire hall experience, so, um, confident that they can do the job, and I think the EMS committee was confident as well that they conveyed that they're competent, and, uh, next steps will be basically setting up a scheduled meet with fire chief and, uh, start design.
That wasn't your packets that, like I said, were emailed out to everybody. Um, if you'd like a hard copy, we can get that for you as well, so.
You're talking about the binders that were permitted?
Yep. Perfect. Yeah, they're also the architect, too, helped us on the library, so they will be checking as well.
The current library project.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Um, last, we do, I apologize for just having a hard handout. It's only like five slides long, so we'll go real quick, but, um, this is just an idea, considering all the discussions on the project that the city is considering and working on. Um, we got to talking the other night after the EMS committee with regards to your potential liquor project and how liquor store project and how you may want to consider procuring that if you need to, so I'll take you through this real briefly. The last couple of pledges are just literally visual examples, so there's nothing to talk about much. Um, essentially, the liquor store project, our understanding of it is that it's essentially a remodel, but it is, it's inclusive of certain components of the facility, including things like the coolers that house the beer and things like that, uh, energy-consuming equipment, uh, lighting, small things like that. There is a little bit of space that's gonna be added on, but I'm not sure if you're familiar with this, so I will pretend that you do not know. Um, there is, under the Minnesota municipal contracting law, there's a section of that titled "energy efficiency projects." And what that allows a governmental entity to do is to really adopt a design-build approach, rather than a design-bid-build, which is where you put it out to competitive bid, just like we were talking about on the library, and both, the, the fire hall will also have to be that way. Um, because we are messing with existing components, uh, within the liquor store, and theoretically, and I'm saying that because I don't know the scope of work, we haven't been there yet, but just based on conversation, it sounds like the changes that'll be made, be made to the liquor store should result in an ongoing energy and operational cost reduction, thus an energy savings, thus allowing you to do a project under the energy performance contracting law. And what that means is, we have to be a design builder, not we, there's others that can do this. We're, we're offering to do it. We just did a project in the jail, this, in this procurement method over in Steel County, um, a year and a half ago, and just wrapped up about six months ago. Um, what we would have to do is we'd have to identify the scope of work. We come up with scope narratives, and we actually do a design-build process with subcontractors. You select your subcontractors. You're not subject to the competitive bidding law under this procurement method, so we can actually select who the contractors are gonna be subcontractors on the project, and they're not gonna be large. I mean, we're talking about appliances and small mechanical moving, a little bit of general construction. Um, but essentially, what that does is it's a design build. We go through, we write the scope narratives. The design's already almost done, 'cause they've already hired the architect to do those, I think at least the preliminary concept plans. Um, so there's really not a lot of upfront development work to do, other than going out and soliciting quotes from subcontractors to make sure that we've got that all taken care of. This'll end up putting, uh, together what's called a guaranteed maximum price for the council to review. Guaranteed maximum price is essentially a function of, the price can go down, but it can't go up. You know what the price is before you actually enter into the project, so you eliminate the whole idea of, oh, here's the budget, and on bid day, we're just hoping that the numbers come in less or at the budget. This, you actually see the price before you enter into that contract. The stipulation, the reason that, why it eliminates competitive bidding and why it allows a design-build process is because technically we have to put together a savings guarantee with how much energy you are going to save. What we will do in this case, it's probably not worth paying for an ongoing measurement and verification guarantee, 'cause the savings are not gonna be that high. The legislation allows you to account for energy savings, operational savings, and what's called long-term operational savings. That's a subjective argument. You can make that decision as a council, but theoretically, if you say that you're gonna have to replace the building regardless in 10 years or 15 years, or make major updates to it, that X million dollar cost can be recognized as a savings over the period of however long you're gonna pay for the project. My point is, you have the flexibility, as long as you understand what you're getting into. Um, we can do this type of a project based on an estimated savings, operating savings, or long-term operational, operating savings, and that is, we'll guide you through how to set that up, and we'll, we'll actually put it together and help you understand what that looks like. But the bottom line is, it's a different procurement method that allows us to do this. We have to come up with a savings and a report that shows you how much you are likely to save by making those changes to the facility, and the law states that with all of those categories of savings, it has to fall within a payback period of 20 years or less. So, that's why on the last, I apologize, I kinda jumped around on a couple of slides here, but on the last couple of slides, one of them looks like this. This is just a sample table. I believe this is actually from Steel County. Just to give you an idea of what the setup is, these are all individual little projects that end of, in, in all of the buildings. Obviously, I don't expect you to read them all, 'cause I realize it's small, but if you follow the numbers from left to right, it says essentially, there's a project budget, so the cost of that specific project, estimated energy savings, estimated operating savings, estimated long-term operating savings, utility rebates, and then you use that all to arrive in a calculated formula at a simple project payback. We can then select and deselect which projects happen here, and as long as the bottom payback number is less than 20 years, and the council agrees to that, and again, understands what they're buying, you can do the project. The next page is just an example of a cash flow document that we put together. If you were to say, "finance the project," which I don't think you're gonna do, but essentially, we just wanna show you an idea of what the financial analysis looks like for these projects and what has to be put together in order to justify utilizing the procurement method. We've done it in a lot of different places. It works really, really well. As a matter of fact, I prefer it, because we have a lot more control over the project. It transfers a lot of risk away from you guys. It doesn't fit on every project, but since we started talking about the scope of work and we're moving a whole bunch of new, high-efficient coolers in and lighting and small things like that, there is a savings. We believe that it's worth considering. Otherwise, we're back to, uh, essentially the same procurement method that we'd recommend that we're doing, uh, at the library repairs project now, so. Just an idea. We're not pushing you one way or the other, but this might be worth considering. Um, oh, as far as cost, Tim, you asked me this the other night. Cost shouldn't really be any more than going down the traditional method that we have. We have a little bit of additional development costs, 'cause we have to do things like energy calcs and things like that, but we also don't have any really design work to do, 'cause that's already completed, so I would say it's essentially gonna be a wash at this point. We would ask for you guys to sign a development agreement, which means there's no cost to you guys. You don't have to capitalize anything. It basically just says, if we end up putting in time to develop the project under this procurement model, and you guys decide for whatever reason we're not doing the project, then you owe us whatever that retainer fee is. It's a, it'll be a few thousand dollars. It's not anything that's gonna be, you know, earth-shattering. Um, but that cost gets rolled into your final contract, so you don't have to capitalize on it. We can basically take this thing to a final contract with a guaranteed maximum price, probably within 30 to 60 days, and, and bring it back to you for your review. So, I can answer any questions? I tried to condense that down as much as I could. I know it's a lot to swallow, but are there any questions based on what I just explained?
When I discussed this with them, this method, one of the strengths is that it does allow us to not have to be as concerned with the public bidding issue that we had on the library project. My concern was that we have a contractor, who obviously there are some issues with, who, um, might be, might be interested in bidding a project like this relatively straightforward, a lot of handling, you know, it's not a complicated project. It's in that same cost estimate area that we were with the library, and so it seemed like it might be an efficient way to eliminate that concern the council obviously has about this.
Just two last things. Um, maybe on the alternative, a better way to even look at that is to say, we can use preferred local contractors.
Sure.
I mean, which is a great, a great benefit to this, because we can actually talk to whom, you know, who we have good track record with, who's local, who can do a good job. We can hire them, and it doesn't matter based on price. Well, as long as they meet our quality and safety standards, that's fine. Um, and then lastly, just the last point I'll make, and I don't think that this is gonna be the case, but if we did need to identify a way to get that payback under 20 years, we could look at adding additional scopes of work. I know it's the last thing you wanna hear, but if we need to get a quicker payback, like a lighting project in some other small facility the city owns that has a quick payback, that brings that overall payback down, we can analyze that, too, in order to bring the, the overall bundled ROI together. That's typically why cities, not typically, that's a lot of times when cities and school districts and counties do projects like this. Um, because if you have, say, you know, a refrigerator's gonna have a 30-year payback on its own. It doesn't save that much money year on year, but if you're coupling that with other projects that have a two or three-year payback, now you start to bring the whole thing down. That's what that financial analysis really shows. Um, it's probably not gonna be super applicable here, but I want you to know that that is also an option, so. So, that was it. Um-
Questions from council?
When do you need decision on that?
It's up to you. I think, I think-
The council would probably like to digest it a little bit and talk about-
Yeah, and we can certainly provide like a written summary. I think this is probably as simple as it's gonna get, 'cause it is a new thing, not, not every, it's not, everybody's not knowledgeable on energy efficiency project legislation in Minnesota, I get it, but, um, as far as the, the scope of work has been pretty well identified, based on what we know, we need to go sit down with Kathy and make sure we have a better understanding of it, 'cause we weren't involved in any of the work that the architect had done so far. So we need to talk with them and figure out exactly what that anticipated scope of work is, put a budget to it, and then all we need to do is get contractors put through, and then we need time to put together that report that meets the legislative requirements. We can probably get that done in 30 to 60 days, so, I mean, if you guys wanted to talk about this in a couple of weeks or a month, I'd, you could still have this project rolling in the summer easily.
Either we can present a work session or see what our agenda looks like in the next couple of meetings, too.
This is a fall project, September or later.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be a huge rush.
The longer time we have to develop it, the better, just because, you know, the more, I mean, that way it's not everything, you know, hair on fire, but, um, I'd say give us 60 days to go start to finish. When you say go, if you wanted us to use this, it'd probably 60 days until we could bring an executable contract back for your review. Um, so, yeah.
Because you mentioned fall. Um, if I can just offer a suggestion, since the big iron classic weekend is typically the largest, uh-
Yeah, it's after that.
Payday.
Yeah. The plan is it has to be after that.
Either plan it to have it complete before then, or start after that.
Yep, that's part of the plan that Kathy's communicated.
Okay.
What's the date of that? The weekend after Labor Day. Second, second Saturday.
Let us do some talking, sir. I mean, I don't know that you wanna go-
We wanna do it after. Be an early option.
You, you wanna do that. So, you might be able to get them-
Yeah, one would be an early option that could coincide with the roundabout construction. However, the other option would be to, more likely to do it after September 15.
Sure, 'cause that's the floor time there, anyways, according to Kathy.
That's kinda what she's targeting right now, I think, because she said that there's a low between then and the holiday season, so.
And Tim, that would also be helpful, too, just because our understanding is there's a, a significant amount of appliances that need to be ordered, and that's one of the biggest question marks of supply chain issues. And Tim, that would also be helpful, too, just because our understanding is there's a significant amount of appliances that need to be ordered and that's one of the biggest question marks of supply chain issues. So, even if we were to have a contract early on and just have a draw schedule that takes, draws way out later, you know, and as long as you just cover like equipment, things like that upfront, that way we can ensure ourselves that we have the lead time necessary as well. So I, I'd still say the sooner the better, knowing that even if we wait till September, hey, maybe we can have everything ready to go, quicker construction period, so. What I will do in the meantime is if you have any other questions, let me know, but I can get you a draft of what the development agreement looks like. It's just a couple of pages similar to, excuse me, similar to the last one that we've done. And it just basically lays out just what we're talking about here, so.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
Formative sheets. Mayor's report, the only thing I have there is to verify with council or check with council for the March 5th, uh, work sessions. Typically, we, we're gonna try to do it the last weekend in February, but Dan has to work that day, so we try to look at March 5th. Does that work for you, Mel?
Yeah.
Ryan?
Yep.
Usually go from 8:00 to noon. Okay.
I did last year.
You did last year, yeah. And are we doing that here this year or are we going back out to the city?
We did it here last year. I think we'll probably do it here again.
Back here?
Because, you know, it is nice for the computer, with the, with the TVs and the computer access. We can do presentations if we need to. And I know Nancy's developing, you know, kind of her framework for that meeting, she always does a good job on that. I suspect we're gonna have Mr. Bobani here as well because that financial piece will be a big part of it, talking about our projects and when we wanna do bonding and stuff like that. So we'll have an agenda. Nancy and I'll sit down and work on an agenda we want for that meeting, so.
Okay. On the old business foundation drain issues in 2017 street project, I understand we got some of that stuff taken care of?
We do. Mr. Doubles brought in his work plan today and Mr. Murray had called once he received the letter and he is done. We were just trying to get him and stay coordinated to go inspect it. Dave is also working with Robert Schultz on getting that one inspected. There are two people I have not heard from at all. They got the letters.
So next month they'll, they'll have the fees.
Yeah, the bills for February have already gone out. So next month, the two would get, unless I've heard any more from them, which I would keep you updated.
Okay. They'll just give that to their bill until they say something we're gonna fix.
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much. I need to go back to the mayor's report. There's some committee appointments that I have to make tonight. But I don't, I didn't bring my note with me. Mel, do you have the?
Heather Grand C for the library committee.
Right. Okay.
I, there was, we did one last time and we didn't get them.
She was done last, beginning of January.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Because I wasn't sure. I thought, Pat, wasn't there, we were able to, one was done and one wasn't?
One was done in December and one was done in the last week.
Okay. So my brain is just in a spin.
Okay. I was like.
Go ahead and double check.
Sorry.
Thanks, Mel.
Sorry.
That's good. Uh, we'll go on to old business number two, CRC contract agreement, which is, Tim?
So, at our last meeting, I had brought this issue up and we discussed it a little bit. Basically, you've gotten a copy and agreement, which the city attorney went through and made revisions on. And, so you've got that in your packet. I just didn't know if there was any questions anyone had. Otherwise, it's, it's relatively straightforward. It's part of our effort that we're making this year to try and improve our qualities of service and also our customer service. This will enable folks when they call, instead of calling the dispatch at the county, they'll be talking to a live person. If there's an issue, especially related to outages, it's kind of stemming from the electric utility. However, it would also be available for other issues that come up if we have concerns that folks wanna call when we're, when their staff are out in the field. It allows them kind of not to have to deal with that call immediately instead of it all going to, to, you know, the cell phone that Jared carries around or something like that. It, and it's based on our usage, so it's, I think it's a cost-effective option. It's used by a lot of co-ops in our area, so Peoples Co-op, Darlin' Power, all the electric co-ops, they kind of started this organization, so. So with that, I'd take any questions anyone has on it.
And this is paid for out of the?
Electric.
Electric fund, yeah.
Yep. And it's a one-year contract. You know, if we find that we don't have utilization that meets our expectations, then we can eliminate it. If it, if it seems to be working, then we try, try to keep that. We know that we have gotten complaints mostly from the dispatch up at the county because they, they tend to get the calls. If somebody can't get through to them, somebody after hours, it tends to be that sort of issue, so.
And then we'll have this, will be available on everybody's utility bill and their newsletter and whatever else.
They have a whole kind of media, I don't know, media campaign isn't the right word, but we'll be providing that.
Okay.
Electronically and via the newsletters and things like that, too. So, because we wanna get that information out there and it actually dovetails nicely with some of the technology upgrades we're making at the, our phone system. I think I brought that up last meeting as well. Camtav's basically told us that it's, it's not gonna work going forward. The parts aren't there. So we're looking at upgrading that to be similar to what Josh has at the fire, uh, the police department. So this'll, it'll dovetail nicely in there, so.
Okay. Any questions? Move to approve. Thanks, Dwayne, you have a second. I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's see how it goes.
Yeah.
Minister's report, compass.
Sure. Well, I'll just go through a few things first, and I did include a couple of other separate items afterwards, so you do have the packets and I handed out copies of the compass last week. You know, as, as the council's well aware, we participate with CNPAS, which is Central Municipal Power. It's who does our power purchasing. I was in attendance last week at a, a two-day planning session. There's some rebranding going on. There are a lot of different things going on with them. So I wanted to just share that with you, provide you an update. It was a lot of vision statements and goal-setting and things like that, so it got to be a little long after two days of that. But it was fine. They have a consultant. They brought in this Patrulac Energy folks and, you know, they're, they're looking to compete. They're looking at potentially adding some membership, possibly some customer base. So we may have a new member of that electric purchasing group. One of the members right now, Delano, is transitioning out of the organization, so they are looking to fill that capacity. And the nice thing for us is that this is all collective purchasing. That's what actually gets us the, the deal that we get on electricity. Basically, we buy, we buy as a group, which means that the rate, the wholesale rate is about four cents. And, and that means that it's just a little bit cheaper for us to, to have that. So they're looking at additional customers and possible members to add to help maintain that, you know, that scale. So, other than that, I also included that Byron Solar and I had talked about it a little bit in here. It's a huge project. You know, just a massive 200-megawatt solar farm. It's 1,800 acres total on a, they're gonna have panels on 1,550 acres. And it's really just a, less than a half mile southeast of Cassin. So there's a couple of the farmers down there who are big acres, decided that they, I guess they don't wanna do the farming anymore and this is gonna be more cost-effective for them. So this has been a task force. There's one more meeting that we'll be having and we're meeting with representatives of the township, the county. My biggest issue with it is that they kind of went over everybody's head and they went right to the PUC, Minnesota PUC. And that's, I guess it's, on a project of this size, they are able to do that, but it means that there isn't a lot of feedback beforehand. So it kinda, having us on a task force seems like we're kind of like coming in at the end like, oh, it's already a go. What can we tweak it to make it a little bit better, which is fine. But just so people are aware that very likely by the end of this year, they will be looking at putting panels in. And it's, it's gonna be something that we probably don't have to deal with in the next 10 years for the city, but certainly in the 20- and 30-year timeframe, it's gonna restrict our growth to the southeast. So, just something to be aware of. Other than that, I've got a few other items in there. I was able to attend the firefighters' annual banquet, which was a really good event. We were able to celebrate some of the accomplishments, you know, really, really appreciate that, all the work that they do. And other than that, I would just take any questions anyone has.
Questions for Tim? Right. Thank you. Appreciate it. On the correspondence. Any questions on correspondence, sir? Okay, that'll do it for tonight. So our work session is scheduled for March 5th, 8 o'clock here at City Hall. The next meeting will be on February, was it 9th?
Yep.
Okay. Same time. Move, entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Ryan, you have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. For adjourned, thank you.
We'll set up a go-to meeting for me. Next meeting.